...our item tonight, this is the zoning board of adjustments Valsteed Community Center. Tonight we have two agendas. First, we are going to have a public hearing. But before that, I would like to introduce someone to you. It's one of our neighbors from the south, but just across the parking lot. His name is Dolan Thornhill Jr. If you do not know him, he is the minister for the First Pentecostal Church. Since I have been mayor, each month I invite a different minister from a different church in Van Osteen. So tonight, we are happy to have Mr. Thornhill with us. He has been here 10 years, but he's been in the ministry for 20 years. He's married. His wife came with him tonight. She's escorting him here. They have four children and four grandchildren. So if you will please stand, he will come forward.
Let's bow our heads. Lord, we love you today. We're so thankful, Lord, for the life that you have given us, for the other blessings that you have bestowed upon our life. And, Lord, you said in your word, "Lord, we can come to you, Lord, whenever we are fearful or anything that would come against us, Lord, and we have that ability." You said that your word is the rock that is higher than us. And, Lord, we just ask, as this community gathers together tonight, that your blessings be upon it. Let all the decisions be made through you and because of you. And we'll give you the glory. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Please remain standing. Next, we will have the pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And now our Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible. You may be seated. The next item that we will have is citizens' communication. This communication is not in recog-- those of you who have signed up were not--
That's on the council agenda.
And we will skip to that part and go to this. Okay. Next, we will have a public hearing. This public hearing is regarding a question by the owner agent of the property situated in the city of Van Osteen, County of Grayson, State of Texas, being described as OTP Van Osteen Edition Block 36, Block 1, 2, and one-half of 3 for a variance to the off-street parking regulations for C1 Commercial District Office, Light Retail, and Neighborhood Service Regulations. I believe, did you--
There was one question.
You'll have to speak out.
What?
That applies to the zoning, the parking restriction that doesn't apply to--
Indication denied here. The half long can't be done for this. It can't-- for the zoning, it cannot be done for the other. Okay, so right now. Are there any comments in regard to this public hearing? Any comments? Second call. Third call. Third and final. Then I consider this being public hearing closed. Next. The next item on this agenda is item five, Consider and Take Action Regarding a Request by the Owner Agent of the Property Situated in the City of Van Osteen, County of Grayson, State of Texas, Being Described as OTP Van Osteen Edition Block 36, Block 1 and 2, One-Half of 3 for a Variance of Off-Street Parking Regulations for C1, Which Is Commercial District Office Light Retail and Neighborhood Service Regulations. This is located at 130 North Waco. Do you have any comments regarding this councilman call?
Can we ask questions?
Yes.
Okay. I want-- it's the older house--
Yes.
--crossing the post office.
Yes.
What is-- is-- it used to be residence, and you're turning it into a commercial?
Yes.
How many offices were you having?
Well, it's already been zoned commercial by the city.
Okay.
And would you like to know our business plan, and we have surveys for you.
I just want to know how many renters you think you'll have.
We are looking at three to four renters.
Three to four renters. Will they be the kind that mainly just have an office there, or will they kind of have customers coming in and out all the time?
We're looking at retail spots. We actually already have two retail that would like to go in with us, and also a photographer. And downstairs, there's a study that would be an office.
Okay. How many parking places do we think those people would use?
Can we give you the survey?
Okay.
We have copies.
So what we're asking for is the ability to utilize the space on the south side of the property that-- on the street side of Jefferson Street. We would utilize 40-- we would start at 40 feet from the corner of North Waco Street and extend 92 feet down the property line. And based on the requirements of the city for parking spaces, this would allow us to utilize 10 spaces. We also have spacing, handicap spacing in the rear and one other parking spot in the back. So that would give us a total of 12 spaces that we could park.
You're talking about P and E and parking?
Yes, ma'am.
Right.
And the parking spot we're requesting to use is also 30-foot deep, so it's empty enough to handle vehicles.
Is there a sidewalk through there in particular?
There was at one time. The previous owner took the sidewalk down.
And that would be up to code. Mike Harris is our contractor, so we've already been in contact with him on what the rock parking would require to be up to code.
So it would be rock?
Yes.
Okay. So it wouldn't be any indicators of worrying for--
None would not.
Councilman Moore, do you have any questions regarding Harris?
Has the city of Van Osteen reviewed-- besides planning and zoning, has there been a review by the-- Review by Bureau of Veritas, as their inspection and planner view people make sure that it meets all of the building requirements per our city ordinances and codes?
I believe right now they have worked on--
They've been nice to meeting and working with Veritas. We've got Chairman Veritas as well as folks to make sure we put the appliances secure.
We actually have an inspection this morning--
And fire marshals out of the place. So we're working on all of our ADA codes and our codes. We're very close to make complete. We have all of our ADA codes. Just a few of our codes.
Along the same lines with chief bars and chief myth, has this been looked at as
far as access by lifesaving, if there's been a fire, until stops incidents in areas?
Well, the parking lot, once you guys approve it, I'll kind of have to look at it, kind of measure it, make sure fire lane requirements, all that stuff, we're set for the most true for that.
Is that something that should not be looked at before you do variance?
I've already reviewed it once. It's seen issue though. What we're going to do, I think it's probably going to require some sort of marking, but that's it. Basically, the rear entrance is going to have to-- that gate and stuff is going to have to be marked, so it can't be blocked by people.
And you feel you'd have to 100 feet of feet to choose bars with that block that gets cordoned off very definitely?
When you have a-- an event, and I know that well, draw more people than normal, where do you anticipate those people parking?
We are also asking the city to park the library parking lot.
The question that I have, I have a solution for you, so I'm going to shut it before I get through. That is using city property for private gate, by using city property to accommodate your business. And I have a serious question about that. There had been incidences before that people tried to make it convenient and common, is to use city property in the execution of their private business. It was not true. There is a solution, and Karen, I think, has some input on that. My concern is, we're going to have a big event, an open house, whatever you have, and there's going to be-- the parking is going to be a facility that could cause a hazard, or safety concern. Where are you going to park around, in different places? And possibly your neighbors across the street or up and down the street, it could cause a congestion that might be-- I have a very serious concern about using city property for private gate, and that's--
The part of the library that we use is not what they use for the customers and the rest of the week.
Well, it's still using city property for private gate, and that I am concerned.
Mayor? We're still going through the council, but I'll be glad following you in a little bit. My question is, have you considered requesting, instead of a variance, having it re-zoned to a central business district?
I haven't thought about that.
I mean, that would solve your problems.
That would be awesome. Because right now, it's not central business district, because we're across the street from--
But around-- all around you is central business district, and my question is, rather than going forward with the variance, consider having it re-zoned to central business district.
Would we still have an issue with parking though, because we can't physically cut the amount of square meters parked on our actual property?
It's my understanding that once you're-- if you're in central business district, then your customers can park anywhere. Is-- Now, I mean, it is-- that is--
Would we still be allowed to lock that area, since that would be the entrance, that would be--
My suggestion would be to-- that entire block, to include the library, and a lot of the tiny to have all of that put into the central business district. Maybe you can park the library parking lot all you want to, if you can skip work.
And I think there are several buildings on downtown A-5 that are zoned as well. So I could, you know, when they sand it--
What we could have to do is to ensure it active, to make sure that all of the isn't around the central business district. Would you be interested?
Yes.
You're very interested.
Actually, we talked about that a day ago.
It's going to extend the process, but it would have a huge solution, more possible.
Is this one you wish to--
Extending the process--
I'm telling you why--
I understand, but if you're talking days, weeks, months--
No, this is-- well, Jennifer could probably be more informative on that, as does the number of--
It would be the next council meeting, but if I could get through a request this week, and there is a P that's associated with it, then I could get it done in time for the next planning and zoning and council meeting, which is the first and second week of October.
So we have to wait and up till then? That's just-- So the choice is yours.
Do we make the decision early?
Well, if you-- if that is the choice you want, then you will withdraw this and resubmit it. And I assume tomorrow you will submit it to Jennifer.
Will we still be allowed to park where we're asked?
I don't know. That is something that you're going to have to check legal. If I say yes and it's no, I could-- so--
Somebody parking for--
It's up to you, or you can see what the council wants to do. What is your choice?
I think the thing would be more than accommodating to help you achieve your goals. And what we have to do, we have to sort of clear you. And I realize that's a frustration to wait another month, but it would be the ultimate answer as opposed to--
There wouldn't be any problem with us giving them the variance right now. Passing this, giving them the variance. Then they can apply for the other. If that comes through, okay, then they get that way. Otherwise, if it doesn't work out for them, then they have a list to find that way another month if it is.
Choice is yours.
I would prefer to have the variance approved today, and then also the plan for business.
The variance would be then, but not include parking in the library parking, because that is city--
Just our variance is--
Variance of late today.
That would be great.
Okay. There any further discussion from council? Any further from council? Our librarian, if you wish to speak.
Yeah, I recently had a survey done of the library's property, and the access to the back of your building would be using an unfinished alleyway between our two properties. And I don't know if that affects anything. When he was talking about the handicap parkings in the back of the building, that's a-- the access to that is through an unfinished alley that does not belong to their business or to the libraries.
And it is-- does it open all the way to Dallas Street?
It does.
We're actually, if we give the variance to Rock, the south side of the property, we're going to ask permission to put Rock down to our driveway in that area as well.
Which I have already talked to head of his own committee about that. Jim Adesin said that would be something, you know, it's an all but that would take place in law.
It already has locked there. Even though Mr. Adesin said that it could be all right, it will still have to go through this-- through our legal, because this is a city alley that we're talking about here, not a private piece of property. So that would still have to be covered, different from this. And it is your choice to go ahead and request that this variance, right? Okay. Any further discussion from the council? If there is not, is there a motion at this time?
I'll make a motion to grant the variance for the parking on the south side of the property.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Councilman White. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. It is unanimous. That is a range. Thank you.
Mayor, can you repeat who seconded the motion, please?
What?
Philly seconded the motion.
Yes, you did. At this time, is there a motion that we adjourn from this meeting? Councilman Jennings, is there a second? Second, the Councilman Smith. All those in favor, please raise your hand.
Yes.
This meeting is adjourned. You're welcome. Next, we have a city council meeting that I will call to order. And tonight, we will start-- this is the city council meeting. We're starting at 6:55. The first item we are in or have called to order, the first thing we have is citizens' communication. And we only have one item of communication. And for those of you who have not been to a council meeting before, we have citizens' comments. The council is not required to answer-- that is exactly what it is-- is citizens' comments to the council. Also, due to the-- I almost said overpopulation.
Oh.
Due to the large number that we have here tonight that want to speak, you will only be given two minutes. So under this citizens' communication, the only one that we have is Justin Bailey. Mr. Bailey?
Citizens of the council, my name is Justin Bailey, and I have lived in Valston for over 24 years. I'm a graduate of the high school here in town, and I'm a Eagle Scout from local, which got true. I have put blood, sweat, and effort to make Valston a better community. And as a citizen of the community, I have a concern about the professionalism in handling certain situations by a few employees by our police department. No deep harassment by bullying people over phony reasons covering up the precious pain, ignoring violators in order to harass citizens, not obeying traffic laws, and treating citizens with disrespect and personal engagements. All this has occurred over the past few years, but on a more personal level, just shy two years ago, I was pulled over within a couple of weeks' time. At the last time that this pulled over, the second time, I was taken to jail and charged with a crime which my jury of peers found me not guilty, and which I was not guilty. I was followed for a long period of time outside of town. This is unprofessional, is unnecessary use of resources. And I feel that I was humiliated and embarrassed and subject to an investigation that was unnecessary. It was Officer Hunter and Officer Milner, and Officer Hunter acted pretty professionally, I would say, but Officer Milner, I assume, is behind or the direction of the harassment. It's usually him from other citizens that voiced their concern as well. My girlfriend was pulled over all the way to Howe on Service Road by Officer Milner, subject to the hands of long, lengthy investigations that is unnecessary. A member of my family was pulled over a few years ago, subject to the same harassment, but was let go. But I had to locate them when they were proven not to meet the date of crime. This is unreasonable and unnecessary. There is an establishment in this town, likely right outside of town, that you have to plug. It is a lawful establishment providing capital for Grayson County, the State of Texas, but there's harassment that's bad for business and unprofessional. It is to the point where violators, not even leaving the establishment, are followed, and violent, lawful citizens leaving the establishment are followed and harassed. I want to know, as a citizen and a consensus, if this is not a problem, should we address by the council?
Your two minutes.
I'd ask that we honor the three minutes that is on the post of the gentleman. Give him another minute.
That's a-- that's-- I just want to know what the council is prepared to do about such harassment. I'm not the only person. I'm the only person here, obviously. But there is many that have a voice of concern, and I believe that this situation should be handled properly.
Rest in peace. Thank you, Mary.
Counselor, no ability to respond. We have a form complaint. We need to be prepared, submitted and writing. All accepted. We'll do the investigation, but let's know when the council arrives.
That concludes our citizens' communication. Sorry, hard people, but we have another public hearing. This is to hear comments for-- you know, we don't know on that one. I'm sorry. Quest-- this is a public hearing regarding a request by the owner agent of the property situated in the city of Van Osteen, County of Grayson, State of Texas, being described as OTP Van Osteen Edition Block 15, Block 9 through 14 for a zone change from single family to-- single family residential district two to two-family residential duplex district. I believe this property is located in the vicinity of John Douglas and Jefferson. Okay. Are there any comments regarding this? Second call. Are there any comments regarding this? Third and final call. I consider item four closed. Item five, a public hearing regarding a quest-- request by the owner agent of the property situated in the city of Van Osteen, County of Grayson, State of Texas, being described as OTP Van Osteen Edition Block 15, Block 8 through 6 of seven for a zone change from single-family residential district two to two-family residential duplex district. Are there any comments regarding this? Second call for comments. Third and final call. This public hearing is closed. Item three, we will go back to conduct a public hearing to hear comments for or against the city of Van Osteen, fiscal year 2013-14 operating budget. Are there any comments? Second call. Third and final call. The sharing is closed. Okay, we move to the consent agenda, and we will do item six, which is approve the minutes from the August 13 regular meeting, the August 5, 12, 19, 26, and September the 3 work session meetings, and the September 3 special call meeting. Are there any corrections or these minutes are comments? Councilwoman Oliver? You've got it. Councilwoman Smith? Councilwoman Jennings? Councilwoman Moore? Councilwoman Blake? If there are no corrections, is there a motion at this time?
I'll make a motion. We approve the minutes for the meeting posted.
Is there a second?
Yeah.
Second. Any further comments? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Motion passed. It is unanimous. Next, I will call Chief Landon Smith to come forward. We have number seven. We're skipping. We're going to number seven, which is the presentation of the Van Osteen Fire Department bravery award. Chief Smith?
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Please speak loud.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Good evening, everybody else. My name is Lieutenant Caleb Thompson. I'm a paramedic with the Van Osteen Fire Department. This is engineer Nick Williams. And tonight, we have the honor of presenting the VAFD bravery award to five outstanding citizens. On April 6, 2013, my crew was dispatched to the scene of a four-wheeler accident. When my crew arrived on scene, we were met by a group of teenagers that were very instrumental in the quick response and assessment by our EMS crew. These teenagers overcame extreme adversity and remained calm in a situation where most might have panicked. They managed to perform CPR, as well as contact 911 with clear instructions for responding units. It is with great honor and pride that I get the opportunity to present the VAFD bravery award to the following citizens. award to the following citizens. When I say your name, if you could please step forward and accept your award. CJ Wowling. Ashton Evans. And I believe Denny Graham could not make it this evening. On behalf of the VAFDs, thank you for your valued efforts.
Now, we're going to sit down really, and we're going to item fifteen. Consider and take any action necessary regarding passage of an ordinance establishing using fees for the city park. We will start. We'll do two. We'll do three minutes, and I have, as I call your name, come forward, and you will have three minutes. You need that long. So, the first person that I have is our Parks Board president, which is April Butler.
All right. Hello, I'm April Butler. I'm the Parks Board president. It's our desire, as a Parks Board, to provide great parks and recreational opportunities for the community. We also have kids involved in these sports, and therefore, we have a vested interest in this issue. The Parks Board has not approved this ordinance, and we would like the opportunity to meet with all involved parties to come to a solution that would not only benefit the city, but also the kids. We request that the council table this ordinance for further review and research.
Thank you very much.
My name is Rochelle Phillips. I've been in Van Austin since 1991. I graduated from here. I have three small children from the tenth school here. I'm involved with the football program, the youth football program here in Van Austin. I know you guys were talking about tabling this. And in tabling this, and when you guys look at restructuring this, I ask that you look at the best interest of the children versus the best interest of the city. Some of the things that I know, we have been concerned with as parents and coaches that put a lot of time and money into this. It looks from the outside that it is a way to make money, and our children are not a way to make money. We all work very hard. We're talking about scheduling, concession stands, things that parents put a lot of blood, sweat, and tears into for these children, and if you decide to add crazy outrageous, whoops, excuse me, crazy outrageous fees, it's going to cost our youth sports fees to go up. And we have a lot of kids that are scholarship. We have a lot of families that are low-income families that, as a board and as an organization, that we have to help donate and pay for, and these costs will also go up, to the point where some of these children may not be able to play sports because they can't afford $200 to sign up for a sport. In regards to Old Panther Stadium and the baseball fields, I know that since I was a little girl, we've always played on those fields. We've always been able to allow our children to practice there, and in my opinion, this is something that, from the outside looking in, it looks like a moneymaker, and our kids are not a moneymaker. I know there are a lot of parents here that would agree with me, and I definitely think that a lot of thought and consideration needs to go in this before you guys approve something.
Thank you very much. I do want to say that regardless of what the outcome is, we're interested in hearing what everyone has to say. So, next we will have, I know I'm going to say this wrong, Kathy Mizarko. Okay. Kathy Mizarko.
Just like yourself.
Thank you.
Hello, Kathy Mizarko. Been here nine, 10 years almost. I'm the secretary on the VASA board. My comment is just to ask the city council, when you do, hopefully, this won't be voted on tonight, but we'll be able to table it, so a lot of research will be done on it. My concern is making sure that you realize how many people you would have to hire to take on all these things that the VASA board, the members, the families, the parents are doing right now for free. The scheduling, the volunteering, the concessions, the field maintenance, supervising of events, the reps, the umpires, the signups, the registrations, set up some breakdowns for the events and the games, and just collecting the donations. I mean, we do a lot for free and happy to do it. Do you make mistakes? Absolutely, all the time. Try to correct it in the best interest of the children. So, I just ask you, just think it out really, really carefully before something's just voted on and, you know, passed on through, and then make sure that it's right for the kids. And of course, for the city too. I understand that, you know, we have to make money, we have to try to be profitable, but our kids want to play, and if parents can't afford it, it's going to be the ones that are going to shackle it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Dusty Henderson.
Hello, I'm the treasurer for the Van Austin Sports Authority Board. I've brought one folder, but I've got about three boxes of these folders every month, detailed receipts that Van Austin Sports Authority has put in, I know, into softball fields, baseball fields. For example, we replaced the lots out here at the softball field this year, Eastfield. And I got a receipt right here to prove it. We had GCEC come down, and they volunteered to put those lots in. We replaced the fence for free for the city and for our kids out there. We painted the concession stands, got receipts for those. So, we're making improvements to the, to the parks, and we're not tearing them up, but we're making improvements. You know, that's a lot of money, fence, concession stand, the lots. So, I wish y'all tabled this, and if y'all need any receipts, I got two, three years worth of receipts for what we spent.
What organization were you with?
With Van Austin Sports Authority, VASA. Yes. My name's Dusty Henderson.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, ladies. My name is Karen Love, and I'm the vice president of the VASA. I've also overseen softball and court for several years, so. I've been doing this, I've been involved in youth sports since I was 16 years old. I'm not going to give you a complete breakdown on that, but just by looking, you can kind of put the years together. That gave me an opportunity to, to coach, and when I began this, this venture, it was, it was fine, it gave me a sense of purpose, but then it gave me a career. So, since then, I'm a teacher and a coach in the Kansas City District for, for several years, with the Coach of the Year, but my whole goal is that I serve kids. And that's my calling, I serve kids. I've always loved this town. I've been here all my life. I was born and raised here, and my loyalty goes further than what my people do. So, I get a little passionate when I see programs that could get completely squashed because of fees and finances without even examining other options. I also was on the board, the Parks and Research Board, that wrote the grant for Forest More, and I know that you can find money, you can find it, you just have to look for it, and you have to have the right resources and the right people. So, what I would ask from you is to put a committee together with some diversification where, yes, we know what the budget looks like, I mean, that's public, we know, we know we need to make some money. I just don't think, as Rochelle said, we, we can't just make it from our kids, because that's the main part, the main people, little people, that access and take advantage of our parks. Okay? So, she didn't give the numbers, but 45% of the football program this year was scholarshiped. And that includes they got their jersey, you know, and nobody knows the difference. But they're not, they're not, you know, set aside and said, okay, you know, you are economically disadvantaged, so therefore, you're not going to play with the kids that can't play. And with the fee schedule that I'm looking at, that I've been looking at with this resolution, you would only get kids that were economically advantaged. I don't think that's humanitarily correct, and then again, the people, for both of us that are middle class and just working, hard-working people, to cover all that expense, it just won't happen. If this resolution is passed as it is, I truly believe you will see our youth program completely be taken away. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker will be Gary Evans.
Hello, thank you for your time. I'm now the acting president for VASA. I'm asked that you guys consider, heavily, about taking on this, putting, as the others have said, a committee together that the VASA group is part of that, whether it's one or two members or a select few, even more. Just looking at this and trying to figure out, as some of the others said, what the benefits would be, not seeing that. And when we look at our registration fees right now, we're in the neighborhood of $80 to $85. Just putting some numbers together, rough numbers, and I'll be glad to sit down with any of y'all, kind of comparing them to our schedule last year that we had practices to games. We are looking at an increase of around $30,000 coming out of our pocket. And we translate that into the number of kids that we have playing baseball and softball, that's putting them in excess of $250 per kid, not to mention, I got to put in the cost of uniforms, which costs me around $35. So, as our fees go right now, we try to keep them as low as we can. As I said, I am the president now. I've been involved with VASA this is the third year. The prior years, the first year, I was the baseball commissioner. The last two years, I've been the VP overseeing the baseball functions. That includes the scheduling of the fields, which, you know, as the previous regime had in the brief, and we had the VASA, the local community directly at that time, got priority over the field. That's not saying the other outside team did not, that's saying that the local kids playing here locally got preference over the field and the scheduling from there, what was left over, we sent out to the outside. We've done that same thing this past year. We continue to want to do that with you guys, hand in hand, but we've got to come to a common ground, because as one lady said here, wall hill, if the current structure, the way it's is, I don't have a choice, but at that point, to shut down the baseball and softball for us, the fees are not adequate. It takes me to go, my parents will say, this is what it's going to cost me. And at that point, I have a choice to turn it over to y'all, we're sending to Anna, Lisa, Hal, and candy somebody else to play with. It's not adequate to take this to those process.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Peyton Morgan.
First person tells me I'm sounding very the cable guy, I'm going to be really, really... City Council, city manager, mayor, my name is Peyton Morgan. I do sound like very the cable guy. For about the past six years, I have been, along with others in this room, a couple who are not here that I know would be here, standing with us today, we are your, your parks maintenance home ball fields. Some football field work, and a lot of baseball field work. I read the, I read the resolution number 12. I want to stand here today and tell you that I'm in total opposition as to the way it's written today. We've done a lot of work, I say we, a lot of friends, from the front row to the back here, standing, and a lot that were not here tonight because it's a school function going on, have spent countless hours, day and night, working on these ball fields, donating material, buying material. It's not free. It's not free. I've got a four-wheeler at home, it's got sand in the motor, it's not free, okay? It costs us money, but it's worth it. It's worth it to all of our children, not only our children, but children that come here from other towns to play on good ball fields and to have a good experience in sports, whether it be football or baseball. Every piece of equipment that I wear out is worth it, okay? We can't price ourselves out of our kids' lives. We can't do it. We can't do it. I'm willing to buy four-wheelers, I'm willing to buy trailers, I'm willing to buy drags. Got a gentleman back there that helped me build a bunch of them this year, a lot of time, a lot of effort. I just ask that you reconsider, and however you rework this, this resolution, and just please remember that we look back at what a good job that we do, but none of it would matter or count whatsoever. If it didn't benefit our kids, the kids in other towns around us benefit some too. It's all about our children. We inherit, they're going to inherit this from us one day. We merely got the spark from them for the time being. It's our job to, to make sure that we handed them something better, and that they hand that on, which is passing on. I appreciate your time tonight and letting me speak. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Kenneth Rico.
Rico.
Rico. I'm sorry.
No, no, last one, that gets done every once in a while.
Well, that's the first one I really missed.
I am Kenneth Rico. When I'm with these gentlemen back here, and there's not much I can say that hasn't been centered in, I am in opposition to the 15, I'm making 15. I don't have a whole lot more to say, he's pretty much covered it all.
Thank you very much.
My name is Monty Edge. I've lived here 27 years, and graduated from high school. I'd really love my boy to keep playing. I mean, I coached for five, six years along with you guys. It goes through, a lot of these kids are not going to play baseball or football, they suck. That's, that's what these kids live for, they can play sports. Besides y'all, thank you, it's been real fun. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Misty Bailey.
My name's Misty Bailey. I've lived here for 40 years, born and raised, never left. I'm saddened by this, greatly saddened by this. These kids deserve a recreational sport, and when all these guys back here are talking about baseball fields, that's softball fields too. I mean, I played on those softball fields. My parents could not afford $250 for me to play. I wouldn't have been able to play. It's important to me for my son to go through the things that he's been able to go through the last couple of years, being on all-star teams, being at state, going and representing our town. That's what they play for, that's who they play for, Van Austin. If they wanted to pay 250, if we wanted to pay $250 for them to go play for some big city, we'd pay that. I don't want that. I want him to play for my town, his town, nobody else. And the outrageous fees and everything else, it's going to make that really, really impossible for a lot of kids. I work in a court on the east side of Plano, and there are a lot of kids that are in trouble because they don't have an outlet. This is an outlet. Recreational sport is an outlet. What y'all are playing on or what's on the table is not recreational outlet at all, not in any way, shape, or form. All the blood, sweat, and tears was at no cost to Van Austin City, none. All the stuff that's been done for the All-Star tournaments that our town has hosted and been well praised on how great it was, was from volunteers and all these parents, not the city of Van Austin. That's what's important, is we all put it together for our kids, but it's important that our kids are playing for their town, and they can't, a lot of... And they can't, a lot of them can't do that for what it's gonna cost us. The ones that don't want to do that are already out of town. They're already playing out of town. Keep it recreational for the ones that want to stay here and be proud of who they're playing for, please.
Thank you very much. Next we have Lee Thomas.
I'm the football commissioner for VASA. I've read the proposition. It's, it's well put together, so whoever wrote it, it's, it's put together quite well. Uh, fee structure, I believe, for this town of this size, for what we've got going, is a little high. Um, I will not disregard that. I know that other towns have probably the same fee structure, if not more. Um, there are some generalities in there that kind of restrict, um, fee structure, I believe in there, says that we can't conduct business unless we're a preferred vendor. And there's a couple of other things that, you know, kind of tie together, so it needs to be reviewed again, there's, there's no doubt about that. Um, there is also no doubt that VASA does have a huge scholarship grant. We do give kids the ability to play. Not only do we fund them to play, their registration, pay their insurance, sometimes coaches tote them back and forth to their house. We have a locker full of shoulder pads, baseball bats, helmets, and everything else that we can give to kids that can't afford to even buy their own equipment. So it goes, it's, it's, it's a whole lot more than just registration fees. Um, but I think the key to it is, we want to support the city. There's no doubt, we want to support the city, we want to support the school. We want to do everything we can to showcase Van Osteen. Uh, your boys at OU, right? First year OU opened up, man, on what, playing OU? Got the Mays boys who came up through VASA, number one center draft pick NCAA, that's pretty awesome. Um, uh, McGinnis' boy played ball, and he's playing ball somewhere in East Texas? I mean, we've got kids that are coming through this system and, and, and it's positive, it's a plus. We would love to be a part of it with y'all. VASA, we would love to be the city-sponsored league. That, that's the key to this whole thing. We want to be the city-sponsored league and work with y'all to keep the city's costs down, generate money for the league, for the city. But we can't be here for just that. We need to be here for the Hunter Alexanders, the Jackson Bustos, we need to be here for the kids. And those are the kids that we're here for, and that's the whole point of it.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
That concludes our audience input on this agenda item. Your attendance certainly does speak your concern. Uh, I am proud to say that we have three members of our Parks Board that are here, three of the four members, active members of our Parks Board that are here tonight, and their recommendation even to this council is that this be tabled, go back to the Parks Board, and that they work with the community and with the other members, uh, and schedule meetings so that this can be worked out, and that is their recommendation. It is also my recommendation. Councilman Plight?
I wanted to give you a little bit of information about how this, I was probably a little bit of a part of the starting of this process. In a Parks Board meeting that was discussed with the public work personnel, which he couldn't be here because he's out fixing a water break right now, so they got something important, I mean, at least important to the city to get the water fixed. It was brought up that the city was having problems with mainly destruction of property of either, and that consists of, uh, cutting locks off of, uh, off of light controls, uh, to turn the lights on, tearing the boxes actually apart to turn the lights on, uh, leaving the lights on late at night, uh, police department had to go out and turn the lights off because they were left on. At the football field, uh, somebody kept going, uh, some individuals asked if they couldn't just go up there with their kids and play with, play a little football on the football field, just use it when they wanted to. And so they got checking into it, and it always seemed like it had a lock on it, a chain. I've since found out that, that, that somebody, uh, the city would go out and cut the lock and chain off, and then all of a sudden it would reappear two days later, it'd have another lock and chain on it. Well, I understand that back when Bill Hrankton was here, it was discussed letting VASA control the football field at that time, and who got access to it, so that he asked him to actually lock and chain it. Well, nobody else knew that all this was going on, so therefore when it got to new, new public work person, new, new everything, new city manager, uh, it, it, nobody, I guess, communicated that that's what was happening. And so it was actually one side trying to help out the other side, that was helping out the other side, so, you know, I mean, but anyway, it, it, it comes down to the city is not interested in making money. The city is just interested in getting the function done to where it doesn't, we know we're gonna pay for electricity, we know we're gonna pay for helping the bow fields, we know we're gonna do some of those things, but we don't want to be responsible for losing money because things get tore up all the time. And I know it's not particularly your coaches that are tearing it up, but we've heard that in some cases it is coaches that tear it up. It may not be from your VASA, but it may be from some other group that wanted to have the lights on, or it can be from teenagers that want to have the lights on, so, you know, that have nothing to do with any of the athletic club. So, uh, it was suggested that they come up with some sort of fee structure or something that could be done to, to, sort of, you know, to, to reimburse the city, or maybe they could afford to hire someone to make sure all the lights were turned on, make sure all the lights were turned off, do stuff like that. But anyway, so that was how it was sort of all brought up, and, and it went on to the city manager, and then went to the, to the, uh, city attorney to come up with something. It just moved a little faster than anybody wanted to, and it never, it, it really needs to go back to a committee made up of the Parks Board, made up of, of the VASA, made up of any other groups that use the fields themselves, I don't know if there's other clubs or organizations that use the fields, and come up with something that is equitable to help the city with maintaining the stuff, at the same time as respecting their authority to go out and operate the stuff. Nobody in the city, as far as I know, wants to go into the business of running athletic clubs, or running leagues, or any of that kind of stuff. We did, we are not there yet, you know? Ten years, we might be there, but right now, we're not there yet. We want, you know, leagues like, things like VASA to accomplish what they've been accomplishing in the past and continue to do so. Uh, I understand that you guys have worked out deals with the public schools to be able to use theirs for basketball and stuff like that. It probably needs to be something like the same kind of things, where they, I think in that respect, I think I was, uh, Jay Cooper called me and talked to me, and he was used to be your president of it, and he, he said that, that a lot of, you know, the situations are, you know, they, they don't mind scheduling that we owe this amount of money, but if we spend this amount of expense to go fix up this amount of stuff, we expect to have that go against that amount of money. And, you know, we can, that, that committee can get together and maybe come up with some good ideas, in that respect of how to do it and accomplish it, and we, we, I can guarantee that I don't think there's a single person on this board that doesn't want to see baseball continue, doesn't want to see the kids continue to play, doesn't want to continue the sport, only kids with everything we can in this town. It's just, you know, we're just trying to figure out how to handle the problems that we have with it too, but we're just not getting the right people. Maybe now the right people can get together and talk about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Plight?
I'll only give you three minutes.
Yes? Councilman Plight took the full three minutes, he was a little overwhelmed, he dug it for yours.
I'm probably the only councilman up here that's got kids in the system, so, uh, it does, it, this does affect, this does affect me. I've got four kids and three of them have claimed some sort of VASA support. Um, so I don't want to pay a ton of money either, but I've also been working from the city side, seeing where it's coming, coming from. I've also been here long enough that I've also watched where the VASA went through this same exact situation with VA ISD, and somehow things worked out. What is being proposed is exactly what needs to happen, is that this does need to be tabled, there does need to be committees, or people come together and we start talking about it, but ordinances do need to be put in place to give our staff the ability to enforce things. I mean, it's the only way they can. They are charged by city council by ordinance. If that means that on the ordinance that somebody leaves the lights on, they're gonna, the people that last used it get fined a five hundred dollars, that's what they, now they have the ability to go and do that. So there's problems that need to be fixed, but we need to sit down and be able to figure out how we can keep our sports in town, allow our citizens, remember, it's not just VASA that uses fields, you know, there's churches and, and other organizations that want to be able to walk in these fields and utilize them, and they've actually been run off because VASA thinks they've got privilege over it when they didn't. These are the type of issues that from a city perspective, we've got to be able to look at it from the standpoint of a town and not just the standpoint of one particular group. So we've got a lot of issues to look at, which means the VASA's gonna have to be a part of it, and I'm definitely for tabling this and coming together and finding the, the ways to meet everybody's objectives in keeping the sports in the town, but also to meet the city's objectives of being able to start maintaining these better. I mean, how many of you have been out there and seen the cracks in the ground? We really need to be able to either water these fields or spread dirt on it. The most feasible thing in our expansive place soils is to, we need to water, because you go and you put sand in the cracks and all that kind of stuff, and the water comes back in, all of a sudden, now you've got ground like this. So we need to be able to do these things. It may not be this year, it may not be tomorrow, but we've got to be able to work with the Parks Department, public, public works, and start moving in a direction that we can get some improvements, but also not damage our program.
Thank you, Councilman Jennings.
Yeah. I, I'd like to say first, I'm excited to be on this tournament. I, uh, it appears we have a commonality in the children. It's a very good deal for our community. Okay, uh, we have a commonality, and we're concerned about our children, our community. We received packets, uh, in advance of the council meetings, and unlike really, I was not really aware this was taking place at all, and had actually, I just used my packet and just, when my phone started ringing, I thought, hold on, I was, and I started getting phone calls, and I agree with the mayor and much of what's happening here tonight. Uh, there is a need, and I, I know, I, I, we've been in budget workshops, I've been in ten budget workshops, uh, and knew more in depth what we are doing here, but I also know that VASA is not a very extreme, is going to fund and to do some deposit at the city, which, which, that's not what it is. But I fully support tabling this, it needs to be a committee type, it needs to be involved in this, okay?
Thank you, Councilman Jennings.
I'm in favor of tabling it, and I think that's been said. Well, I agree with tabling it, and I think it needs to be torn up and started all over again. I have a, I guess maybe more of a maternal instinct there. I think the children are the most important thing we have in this community, and besides the library and the sports, there is nothing else for our young people. And, so I'm very passionate also about this situation, and again, I didn't know about it until I got phone calls and decided to go through the entire packet, but, uh, I, I don't agree with what is here with this ordinance, not at all. And, uh, you know, if the sports and that weren't supervised, that would be one thing. But I remember growing up, we had a baseball field that we kept up as kids. I mean, what, what do we want? What, what's the city becoming? Um, I, I just don't understand, the citizens are paying taxes, that's what that's for, to maintain this thing. So, you know, it used to be happy times, I think it's turning into something that is unbearable and not needed or wanted. So those are my personal feelings and my comments about this. And I'll be willing to help too on the board, or, you know, working with anyone on this.
Thank you very much. We do have a Parks Board, uh, that's very active, and they do, uh, everybody should attend the Parks Board meeting. It's open to the public, everyone is invited, allow an application to be on the board at City Hall, uh, not just because something has come up that has brought you here, but the fact that we have a Parks Board and we have a number of parks, and I do want to remind you before we go to, that there are more than one parks. We have a park for very young children up at the north end, we have a memorial park. Uh, parks are for sports, but they're also for other things, so don't forget, there are a number of parks in the city of Van Osteen. So at this time, we have had our input from the audience and our input from the council. Is there a motion regarding number, uh, the ordinance?
I'll make a motion that we table, I have number fifteen, and ask that the Parks Board serve as the administrator for providing the legislation for the council.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Councilman lower.
I, I would like to say one thing real quick, is this is the only opportunity that we get to discuss as a council, an item. So understand that some of the things that we've talked about, this is the only opportunity we get to discuss this, so, not to break.
Thank you, Councilman Plight. Regarding the motion.
Yeah, uh, I just hope that, as part of that motion, that they do include this, you know, city departments and the VASA and other interested parties, so it won't just be a part of what makes the decisions. I like that.
Well, our Department of Public Works director is a part of the Parks Board, he does attend council meetings. We have a motion and a second. All motion in favor, please raise your hand. It is unanimous, this item is tabled. Thank you very much. And for those of you who are ready to go to a ballgame, you're dismissed. The rest of you, please stand. If you will, please come to order. We will now go to item eight of the agenda. Consider and take action regarding passage of an ordinance as it relates to a request by the owner agent of the property situated in the city of Van Osteen, county of Grayson, state of Texas, being described as OGP Van Osteen additional block fifteen, lock nine through fourteen for zone change from single-family residential district to two-family rented residential duplex. And we have had a public hearing on this, and there were no comments at that time. Councilwoman Joy Burton, do you have any comments regarding this?
I just was wondering if there was any opposition from the neighbors for this?
There was one by the children, and it was fine.
Okay.
I'm doing it, I'm doing it wrong.
Okay.
Are you talking about one story or two story? One story, double family?
Then you want to change because you are the property owner at this time. Councilman Smith, do you have any questions regarding this?
Well, I was, I attended the SPC meeting and there was a concern, there's not anything illegal about the, as, but there was a question brought up about re-zoning part of a lot from the, from Jim Atchison. That's something that's going to be addressed in the future. It concerns me now. Now, we could approve lot nine through 14, since there's not a, not an issue with that. But the lot eight and the north six, eight or seven creates a question. Are we doing the right thing? And are we going to create an issue in the future? And it will have to be corrected.
Lot eight and north six of seven.
That's number nine, next to Jim.
Right, but, but I'm saying that, that that is, that was a concern, that the city would be doing something that they didn't have asked you to do.
I don't have an issue with the first one, with lot eight, because it's full lots, nine through 14.
We're, we're still on line eight.
But we, we can't, we can't zone half a lot.
But that's the next guy. We're going to stay on item eight. Sorry, Mr. Webber.
There's a bigger picture than that, so we would have to post it just these two items second.
Oh, okay. Councilman Jennings. Councilman Moe. Councilman Plank?
Yeah.
Do you have any questions? Then, uh, since there are no other questions, is there a motion at this time regarding this ordinance?
I'll make a motion that we approve the, the request for lots nine through 14.
This is number nine.
Lot 15 on lot eight.
Okay, is there a second? Second, by Mr. Councilman Moe. All of, any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. It is unanimous. Number nine, consider and take action regarding passage of an ordinance as it relates to a request by the owner agent of the property situated in the city of Van Austin, county of Grayson, state of Texas, being described as OTB Van Austin, additional block 15, lot eight and north six of seven, for his own change from SF resident, uh, single-family to two-family residential duplex. Councilman Plank, do you have any questions regarding this?
I'd just like to know on the drawing board where that's at. I'd like to make sure I'm understanding.
Anytime to pull up a picture.
We don't strike here.
Do you have any, say Jerry?
Yeah. I feel like it works.
Do you actually not only own six of them, or do you, or somebody else owns the other part of that lot?
Yeah, the house in Dorota is the southern part of seven.
Okay, okay.
So what you're saying is this is just for two, uh, or now, uh, north six of seven, and just do lot eight, or just lot eight? So this, there will be a change in this, and it will be for lot eight only?
Mayor? Uh, if, if I may, if, um, the lot lines and the setbacks for lot eight are going to apply when they go to build, but if they were to replat lot eight to make it six feet wider and incorporate the six feet that they own into one lot, then that would give them a larger area because it would change the property lines, and then the setbacks would apply from the new property lines. They're not, and the, the zoning of lot eight would automatically extend to that six feet if that six feet became part of lot eight through a replat. They wouldn't have to come back and get the six feet rezoned again if a replat was approved. So I just kind of wanted to make them aware of that so they could know what to do going forward. You can't rezonate part of the lot, but rezoning lot eight is, is fine.
But you don't want to replat it as well. It's on there, lot eight. Okay, they wish for it to stay as it is, but only for lot eight, lot 15, lot eight. So any further discussion? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the rezoning of the lot eight, lot 15, if there's any issue.
Is there a second? Is there a second? Second, by Councilman Plank. Is there any further discussion by council? All those in favor, please raise your hand. It is unanimous. It is passed. Thank you very much. Number 10, consider and take any action necessary regarding a request to abandon an alleyway adjacent to 524 South Main Street. Would you like to jump forward and present this?
You will find that there was a, a document in your packet regarding this. Uh, this is presented by Michael and Kelly Kaye and Nancy Webb, and they have submitted a petition to abandon a portion of this right-of-way adjacent to the properties, and it's owned by the requesters. And, uh, they are only requesting an abandonment of the alleyway, but not the entire alleyway. And it would leave a piece of right-of-way to be landlocked. Uh, it is verified and with legal that this is permissible. Does the council have any questions regarding this? Councilman Plank?
I'm just trying to look at.
Councilman Moe? Councilman Jennings? Councilman Smith?
Is there currently a sewer line or water line in that, in that alley?
There's a sewer line, but I could run through some way. I don't know. I should be up.
It's out, yeah, because they have a duty. That's right.
That is more than two. Yeah, can you explain to me what a name, what the term petition to abandon a portion means? So the city is giving up the alleyway, that portion?
They're, they're requesting, I see.
Okay.
I mean, it's up to y'all.
Yeah. Well, I just didn't understand the terminology. I don't know what that means, so I'm questioning.
Do, do we want, do we want money to take that out? Or do we want to, to, well, it's, it's up to you.
Well, I guess, one, there's no sewer utility lines in there, right?
It's just, we're not pulling out metal now.
Okay, because I know I'm a part of South Main too, and there are sewer lines down line.
But each, of course, they've got any hosen that they found, and they didn't know one where, that this is not, they don't currently have anything there. Have you get anything, sir?
No.
Okay. But you do, you do know portion of that out?
Yeah, we're not, we're not, the city did not, I think, we're thinking out there. I said, only thing we have found is what is on the east-west inside of the basement that we want north of south, off the street. So if there's nothing, it would be in the alleyway or whatever. Since our maps aren't size, it's, we don't want to, I mean, just like, you know, typically we're talking to your property better than, than we do at this point.
And this is going to do the best of our knowledge.
I would not be asking for a search, too, because I'm building, building, and I'm going to go building, I don't care about it. So if you, if you excavate, will you please contact us? Oh, yeah, I, I'll, thank you.
And then with abandonment, then there is no sale or money exchanged in any way?
Are you willing to pay a fee for this?
I'm willing to do the survey, to bring it up, bring up plans to go with.
So you willing for abandonment?
Yeah, ma'am.
If the council wants, which are remarkably, would be marked down, that's, that's, that's a council.
No, I was just wondering, because at the time, when the church was looking at the alleyway where, that I shared with them, there was talk of cost. So I, that's why I'm asking now, uh, that there would have been a charge for it, and I just wanted to know, is there a charge for this?
Well, it's very, she's going to be, you're going to start with the property on replow.
But it's not a, a purchase. That's why I was, you know, questioning abandonment versus purchase. Who's abandoning and what's going on? I am not familiar with this, other than my own experience.
If it's a purchase, we will attach a monetary value somewhere like this to what they did to our property, to our government, but that's not what's going on here. We didn't put it on market to sell. We put in a petition for us to pay. So if the council, if the council wants to keep it, then we can keep it. We can assess, we can assess market value and put it up for purchase, but right now it's, it's not what's current, what's current is, if you're questioning that.
Will your property tax be adjusted?
Yes, yeah, I mean, this is, it's been a thing in city, I've been increasing my property tax, but I have no issue either way, whatever the outside side of it, I'm prepared to just pitch it up.
Councilman Moe?
No.
Well, we have, we have gone to the council. Is there a motion regarding this alleyway abandonment?
I'll make a motion that we approve the abandonment request for alleyway adjacent to 524 South Main Street with the property owners, at the property owners.
Is there a second? Second, by Councilman Jennings. Is there any further discussion? Councilman Plank?
No.
Councilman Moe? Councilman Jennings? All those in favor, please raise your hand. It is unanimous. Motion passed. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda will be number 11, consider and take any action necessary regarding approval of a contract with the Grayson County Tax Assessor Collector to provide property tax collections.
Mayor, council, uh, we provided an updated contract for the city entered, entered into for the county to collect our property taxes, which is intended by the city. Staff recommends to, uh, that you, that you.
Is this just to be established? Should we bring that here? Is that any question? Is it not being done this way now, or what?
It is, but we don't have, we don't have a, a motion.
Oh, okay. And I was going to say, gee, you know, what, what are they doing? And, you know, how are we getting this money? If, uh...
Then that's to renew.
Okay, well, I didn't, I didn't understand that and how it was written up, that it was a renewal.
Well, actually, it's renewed each year.
Oh, it's renewed each year, okay, so. Councilman Smith? Councilman Jennings? Councilman Moe? Councilman Plank?
No.
Uh, is there a motion to this effect?
I'll make a motion that we approve the contract with Grayson County Tax Assessor Collector to provide property tax collections.
Is there a second? Uh, any further discussion from council? All those in favor, please raise your hands. It is unanimous. Number 12, consider and take any action necessary regarding a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign an agreement for GIS, which is 9/11 database maintenance and mapping.
Mayor, council, this is a renewed contract with Texas County Council of Governments to continue to do our GIS map. Price is $12,000. They requested that we enter into a two-year, uh, if we stayed into one year, is what it, what the staff would like to see, because the counties entered into the GIS, or in it well, and see what it is. So instead of entering into a two-year contract with, uh, what we have employers that say they're not getting it, I'm just, it's possible. I'm just, I'm just recommending that we just enter into a longer contract with T-COG for this GIS.
Councilman Plank, do you have any questions regarding this?
No.
Councilman Russell?
I do. Currently, there's problems with some of the mapping. I hear this is what I've heard some people say, that there's still issues with addresses and 911 services and is this going to, do these guys, are they supposed to fix that problem?
And I had, had another conversation with the citizens today, specifically about Lynn Woodington. On T-COG's maps, it says Lynn Woodington. When you, when you go to the Google Maps, it states it to Kenny Street, Kenny Circle, Kenny Street, where it should be Lynn Woodington. And this is, I'm just giving you a specific example. We have no control over Google or any of the other private companies and when they choose to do, accept our database and our, our, our data. T-COG is our representative that submits that. They have submitted it, they submitted it back when we first contracted with them over a year ago. And then the company that did it before us was, had said that they had submitted as well. My understanding is Google, Bing, whoever else, utilize a third party for their mapping information, even though you see the Google party driving around and taking pictures of specific addresses. And, uh, and when that, and when that third party, either when that third party submits the data, or whenever Bing and Google and all them decided to upload it, it's totally on them, what they choose to do. So the main issue we had with this person was, they, uh, T-COG gave access to their maps, to tabs, because that was the main issue. And others use deliveries of UPS, FedEx, and things like that, tellers of fits. This person's going to have to go down to Kenny Street until they update those maps. We could put in all, just, just like anything else, we're, we're at the, we're kind of stuck, we're going to have to tell them to choose that way. What I, what I would like to believe is, if you look at Bing maps, if you look at the Google Maps, and other third parties, or the private companies, their maps are consistent. So that leads me to believe that... me to believe that party, the vendor that they contract with hasn't submitted that data, so if there's a backlog, I don't know what the issue is, but that's where the problem seems to lie. So keep, T-COG, look on the T-COG maps, Linwood and Keny is Linwood and Keny, but it is, they came on last year, and since our water sewer maps aren't up to date, when we do get new information, our engineers submitted, T-COG updates the map, of course, they have other cities that they do work for as well, but they're all working with us, and they have been, they have been a good partner thus far. The only reason I'm asking for the one year is, if the county does get in the GIS game like they said they would, we want to see what their bid is, and what their capability of mapping is as well, so we're not stuck in a two-year contract.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it is, yeah. If I recall, I, if we not, last year, we changed contract, we were with someone else, we were with a private company, and we knew that T-COG, they were going to be best friends, it's not fair, they don't provide like levels of mapping, we pull in that, water and structure and security, the base, they got all of these.
You've got water, and you've got the sewer, as current as the maps are, as we do build up, identify our, our system.
So there has been some improvement?
There's been improvements, you can see, we can see all the plans, we can see the addresses within the city, we can see our hydrants, we can see our nine-one-one, zoning, there's certain, what's that?
Zoning.
Zoning, or zoning maps, so there, there are overlays, where the issue lies is, if we do have something that's, property that's in dispute, you cannot, we don't necessarily rely on what the T-COG map says, we still have to go to the county, pull the physical documents off of the county, I'm not sure what the property boundaries are, what they are, and it's, that's part of what we're running into, Mr. Kane, was making sure that what, what we're looking at with T-COG map, and what's on file with the county, was true and correct.
Do we think the rest is, is that true?
Yes.
Whose budget was the twelve thousand?
Contract services.
And that's concluded in this budget?
Yes, sir. Yeah, since we're, they wanted a two-year contract, and we're wanting a one-year contract, is there an increase in price, because we're not going two years? And I, I, I am one of those people that's still having trouble with, if I put in my current address, I, they don't know me.
Councilman Smith, when you give back your contract services, what we submitted to last night, this is twelve thousand, let's say the T-COG map, it says nine-one-one address.
Yeah, no, it's, it's just, yeah, Garmin, Google, Bing, none of them recognize me. You was okay. If there's no further discussion, is there a motion regarding this?
I'll make a motion that we authorize the city manager to sign a agreement with T-COG for mapping for the event.
Is there a second? Second by Councilman Moore? Is there any further discussion? Councilman Plank?
No.
Jennings? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Three opposed? Huh? Did you forget, I didn't see your hand, sorry.
Did you focus?
Yes. Oh, I'm very long. It's a long meeting. Okay. Next, we will go to item thirteen. Thank you. Item thirteen, consider and take any action necessary regarding authorizing mayor to sign a resolution requesting farm target one-twenty-one east closure authorization from TexDOT for the October nineteenth, two thousand and thirteen Fallerall event. We have one speaker who would like input in this, and it's Cheryl Snyder, who is the president of the chamber.
It's me. City Attorney One, Council Mayor, City Manager, thank you for the opportunity to speak about this, item number thirteen. My name is Michelle Snyder, President of Van Alston Chamber of Commerce, and on October nineteenth this year, the chamber is sponsoring the second annual Fallerall event in the downtown area. This event has broad community support. Last year, we asked and were granted from TexDOT the temporary rerouting of FM one-twenty-one on this Jefferson in town, from the east side of railroad tracks to Preston. This is a critical two-block area for the Fallerall event, which covers roughly six to eight blocks. The twenty-four event went off safely with volunteer manned traffic barriers from six AM to six PM. Our original, and still primary concern, is the safety of over three thousand plus festival goers, as well as the traffic coming through town. Traffic is rerouted two blocks, coming from the east side of town, directly on the other side of the railroad tracks, and then north down to Van Alston Parkway. Traffic can continue to the festival, or west on out to Highway five, or Highway seventy-five. As you are all well aware, traffic coming from the east on FM twenty-one, even growing the speed limit, cannot see what is on the other side of the railroad tracks, and would likely be unable to stop in time to avoid pedestrians. Events, vendors, and music will be scheduled in the area of Jefferson, and in and around the gazebo. And on behalf of the chamber and the Fallerall Committee, I request that the city of Van Alston once again ask TexDOT to allow us to reroute the traffic on October nineteenth from only the hours of six AMs to six PM. During that time, we will once again have volunteers at the barriers for emergency access, and then at six PM, the festival activities will shift to the south side of Jefferson until nine PM, and Jefferson FM one-twenty-one can be reopened. Fallerall is a happy, family-friendly event that advertises Van Alston in a positive light to the entire North Texas area. Please help us continue to make it a safe event. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Cheryl, in your letter, it said from seven AM to six PM, so in the roadway closure, I put down seven AM to seven PM, so.
Okay. We don't really need it to go as late as seven PM?
I understand, but the thing about it is, if something, if we do have something occur, where we need that closure time to get everything windowed, we have it windowed, but what I'm, what I'm saying is, we're not going to close it down till six, till seven AM.
Okay. Is that what we did last year? I was thinking, we were all thinking it was six AM.
I understand, but what, as you got my request letters, it was seven AM, is that?
Um...
I just want to clarify, is that what you...
If it's possible to change that to six AM, I think it would be better for vendors arriving early, than being in the dark, that time period.
Six to six.
If possible. Counsel, Councilman Plank, do you have any questions regarding this? Councilman Russell?
No.
Councilman Jennings?
Last year, we had, we took the barriers down earlier, because there was absolutely no activity on the street, and I requested, last year, to take the barriers down, since everything was gone, and I think we did that down five or so. Is that another consideration that can be given this year, if the street is clear?
If the street's clear, just like we did last year, yes, it's not a issue, I mean, it might have probably seemed to be, what if they bounce out?
Right, so once they were gone, and the vendors were all gone off of that, that section, then we, then we, so we could possibly open, or take the barriers down, still, then, at seven o'clock or six o'clock.
The only thing about it, just like last year, is we get the crowd, if that is current, just like last year, we have to bounce out, and put it up, we need to get the crowd, the B A system, we did it in town, on her five, they will, I can't talk, I can't talk to the person.
The request is six AM, is a week?
Six to six.
I have a question. I'd want to see, it says resolution ordinance number, and it, it just says resolution, what is ordinance?
TexDOT, TexDOT asked for either a resolution or an ordinance, they didn't have a preference, and at the time that we handed out packets, we didn't have a resolution to provide, but I laid one out, you should find one in front of you.
So this will be a resolution, or like?
TexDOT was sending one.
Right.
So, it's either the first one, or the second one, so, or the one that's coming, that's, that's a resolution, a resolution, I just want to know what the number is, so we're going to, when it's back to...
The plan is not, it's stated under resolution, is that correct?
No, it's stated in the agreement.
Councilman Plank, do you have any questions regarding this?
No.
Councilman Moore? Councilman Jennings? Councilman Moore? And now, Councilman Smith? Is there a motion regarding this?
I'll make a motion that we apply to TexDOT for the closure of FM one-twenty-one on October nineteenth, for the hours of six AM to six PM.
Is there a second?
I'll say that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. Jim? Okay. We have four farm, any events abstained? We want to get the status. Motion passed. Number fourteen, consider and take any action necessary regarding appointment to the library board. The library board consists of seven members, all who live or work in the city or extraterritorial jurisdiction of Van Alston, and with the reappointment of these individuals, the board will consist of six members. The term is far, two years. The applications are Deja James, Gwen Getton, Audra Nell Slack. These are the three applications that are before you tonight, are consideration. Are there any questions regarding this? Councilman Plank?
Is there, attention to get a seventh member?
We're still trying.
Okay.
Councilman Moore? Councilman Jennings?
Councilman Smith?
Yes, I, one, are there term limits?
Two years.
No. No. Oh, you mean, term limits? Yeah, two years. And that, that works out okay for you, you got term limits?
Yes. And all three of these currently serve on the board, they are...
Yeah, I thought it was reappointed. Yeah. Any further questions? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we reappoint the three names listed.
Is there a second? Second by Councilman Moore? Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise your hand. It is unanimous, they are reappointed. Thank you very much. Next, we have item number sixteen, discuss and give direction to staff regarding issued regulations of double fencing and fencing standards.
Mr. Mayor Council, I'm running into an issue, over, specifically over Georgetown, regards to fencing, the R. Horton, this isn't just something that they're doing in Van Alston, this is something that they recently started doing in all the municipalities, the issue goes back to legal action taken against them by property owner in Princeton, and where they did get it, to my understanding, is they did get the agreement from the property owner, but once they connected the new fence to their fence, issues arose, legal action was taken, they ended up paying a fine, or paying costs in court, so their remedy was to double fence. Where that causes us problem is property owners, they will create a void space, where property owners won't be able to do, if you have two fences side by side, property owner going to lose fame, the fence, not going to be able to adhere to property landscape, probably create a vector problem, as far as weeds and trash accumulated between fences, that's inaccessible, where rats, rodents, insects, as far as vector problem can impact them, as well as creating potential fire, and stuff like that. What we're looking for is direction to legal, direction to staff to come up with an ordinance that will make it permissible to where property owners perform, some form, some form agreement to connect fences, just like in the old century past, without, without that becoming a issue. If it's not, not a big issue for council, then another deal, but if it is, which I hope it is, that we may move forward, we may move, we may move fast, well, not we don't need to move fast, but we need to move, to make sure that not only does it not continue, but that the one home that already has a double fence over, Georgetown, doesn't stay that way, and two others that are being completed, don't end up with double fence.
You're talking about removing, moving fences, you said it doesn't stay that way?
Talking about that, we all want to move along with the fences.
This doesn't belong to an individual, it wants to...
It belongs to, but they're in the process of settling, so if we transfer, the property on the fence, and the property on the property, when we start trying to force the property to stand, we're starting to...
But those that are already double fenced, this could not affect them?
We won't, we won't, them to work retroactively with your correct issue.
They're all, they're all, they're all...
But there are double fences, and there are some...
They're all holding in?
There are some double fences in this town, and what I was getting at was, the ones that are already in the established part of town, this could not affect them, it would just be from, from the builders, and now following, right?
If you, if you want, like, where just the builders are addressing, you can do that.
Well, no, I'm talking about from this day, not going around town, and if you've got a double fence, we're going to make you take that down.
He's trying to get one fence out there fixed.
Well, we're just, we're trying to get direction from this.
Yeah, I know he wants one, I just didn't want something that affected every double fence in town.
If it's two chain link fences, or if you, I don't know, I don't know the issue.
My property is double fenced, that's the issue, I'll correct you. This was in agreement with the property owner next to me, and me, because there, a certain section of that gave absolutely no privacy whatsoever, so we're looking right into their back bedroom, and their backyard, so we already had a chain link fence, we did not want to rip up a fence that was already there, so there is a stock gate fence for a certain section there, to afford privacy to both ways, so what my question is, those fences stood, they've been there for years, I didn't, that's what I was, that's what I was, that's the circumstances I was getting at.
So the main thing is, we're trying to seek direction as far as you want, from such and such that board, that, because we don't have an ordinance yet, and other cities are running into this issue, nobody's drafted an ordinance, where we can smash that, modify for Van Alston, this is, this is happening in other municipalities, so, if council wants to wait and see what other cities are doing... So if counsel wants to wait and see what other cities are doing, we can do that. We would like to head again and update this before we get to the rest of the issue. Because with the six... Talking about that, I'm not sure, I want you to explain what you're talking about. What we're talking about is two six-foot private, private fences, so close to one another that there's no way we can clean, mow, anything like that.
Now we have a good turn fence, a solid fence. But I just do not want something that went bad.
So mainly, we're trying to seek direction, counsel. Is this something we don't want to go after, is this something that we're supposed to sit tight and see what happens? Melissa, Preston, all the other DR work communities, the building, what are they gonna do about it? Or are we simply gonna translate it then? I mean, the main thing is, we don't want all this to pop up, and we get six A fences in for this, and then we have property maintenance issue, and then Princeton, we're gonna talk.
We have an issue too, that, you know, DR overbuilding the HOA area. And those, those HOA invitations from the south side, who is responsible? And what kind of gap they're building, they're building two inches of one. There's no standard, so...
True, and that's why we're looking for direction. It was like, you know, what, do y'all want to make it where mower with? Do where they have to be twenty-one inches apart, where your mower leader through, or do y'all want to make it where...
Very hard, you have two stop gate fences.
I really feel that in this situation, we need to, my thoughts are, the fences are connected as they have. If there exists a double fence in town, that's, that is a problem.
Okay.
But at least play the units like Georgetown, and we're gonna create a, really house, if you got a two-foot gap, a three-foot gap, and then fitting on the situation, we could just walk and protect the fence.
Your lawnmowers, you know, you got a riding lawnmower, you can't...
But actually, they're not building that way, they're building, setting up next to each other. So you can't get anything in between.
That's gonna grow off.
So that means that my, just like on my house, my fence is on the outside, attached from the outside. If they build a second fence there, I can't get my fence boards off.
Repair?
I can't do anything to it. I can't now, I can't even, I can't even reach behind there and do anything, so...
And they put the fences right on the property line?
Yeah, that's it. Yeah, if my room is close to the property lines, they can, so people get more backyard.
Why would they want that extended, if there's arguing?
Because they got sued, they went in and somebody, and somebody sued them for doing that. For putting up, attaching, sharing a fence between houses. They agreed to it strong with them.